I will reconvene in an open session this meeting of the AISD Board of Trustees for August 22, 2024, beginning at 9:40 a.m. Thank you for joining us this morning. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted, and anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input but insist that we remain respectful and civil. We will start our meeting with our opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Smith in leading us in the pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, I'd ask that we please silence all cell phones and electronic devices, and we will have a moment of silence. The first item on our agenda today is our open forum for agenda items. Ms. Crossno, do we have any requesters who registered to speak?
President Chapa, we do have one.
Thank you, Ms. Crossno. I have Mr. Bennett. Mr. Bennett, I know that you're familiar with these rules, but I'm just going to go ahead and say them for the record.
Yeah, I appreciate it because I'm addressing two items, so I want to know if I get to address one each individually or both at the same time.
It'll be both at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated, and personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You have three minutes to speak, and Ms. Crossno will notify you when your time is up.
President Chapa, since I'm speaking to an agenda item, somebody wants to ask me a question, that's allowable, correct?
I'm not going to stop someone from asking you a question.
Okay. Under agenda items, only statements of facts.
Yep. Thanks for the clarification, Mr. Bennett. Your time's started.
Okay, thank you. Daniel Bennett, I live in White Settlement. I'm here to talk about the budget and reappraisal plan. The budget itself, the M&amp;O, is actually lower. I do have a 2.5% merit that gets to be applied as the chief appraiser sees fit. Not everybody's getting 2.5%. Some may get zero. Where the large increase in the budget is, is the software and the technology. Mr. Law, due to no oversight and no management of prior boards, has allowed technology to get 20 years behind. They were running XP on the system. They didn't even safeguard the system, and we were hacked. The system Mr. Law went live with in 2014 was a corpse. It didn't allow for uniform and equal. It corrupted all of the exemptions, and it babysat that to a tune of a half a million dollars last year with personnel and licensing fees. $300,000 licensing fee, that meant $1.2 million of our monies being paid to people doing workarounds, walkarounds, and getarounds. We need the software in order to get back to uniform and equal, not missing new construction, and getting exemptions back where they will not get corrupted and they disappear. That's what was happening. So that's the budget. Now the reappraisal plan. We are here today because of the unabated oversight, or lack thereof. This board has put people on the appraisal district and did not follow up, did not do your due diligence, thinking it would just carry itself to the day because you guys were getting your budget, you guys were getting your certified rules, no matter if people were losing their homes because their exemptions were wrong. I have internal emails from TAD where it said, "What stays at TAD, what happens at TAD stays at TAD." Sounds like OJ Simpson. Don't tell them not to pay their bills. In other words, they're paying a bill they don't owe, but since the system's messed up, they'll lose their home if they don't pay it. So tell them not to pay their home, not to pay their bills. So I want to talk to you about, I only have 30 seconds. Instead of looking, as we should have, for software that protected the taxpayer and doing the right things by the taxpayer, we now have pitchforks and torches out. This reappraisal plan and at-large election and everything that's happened, all manifested from this body, North Richardson Hills, Fort Worth, Fort Worth ISD, and the Commissioners' Court under Glenn Whitley. Now, the pendulum has swung, and now you guys are unhappy because you guys have been sleeping. It's time to wake up and work together. That's what I said at TAD, I'm saying it to you now, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. We have reports. We have one item, consider impact of the Tarrant Appraisal District 2024-2025 reappraisal plan and related 2025 TAD budget. Dr. Smith?
I'd like to invite Carla Martin up and Darla Moss as well. Carla and Darla lead our finance department, and they are here to present to you a brief report today with some overview and potential impact on Arlington ISD of the reappraisal plan and the budget.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good morning, Mr. Chapa, Dr. Smith, trustees. Today, we're, just want to share with the board the potential funding impact of the TAD's most recent actions taken on August 9th as related to the 2425 reappraisal plan and their budget. So an overview of the timeline and how it's occurred, we were initially informed of these plans that were occurring at the TAD entity meeting on June 27, 2024, and again in July 18th, letting us know there was going to be a board meeting on July 22nd for the board to vote, to direct the chief appraiser to propose a plan to appraise properties more than once a year. So currently, they're doing it annually, and they were looking at every three years. When that meeting occurred on July 22nd, the board did vote to direct the chief appraiser to propose a plan to appraise their properties every two years. A few days later, on August 2nd, TAD did call a meeting with school district officials to listen to our concerns of how this would affect our funding and to also discuss the draft of the reappraisal plan. There were four board members there, the TAD board members, and there were various school district, school finance officials, superintendents, and board members. They did go ahead and do a public hearing on August 9th where they held a public hearing on the appraisal plan, and they did vote to go ahead and approve the 2526 reappraisal plan. Some key portions of the plan included that they would, residential properties will be reappraised every two years instead of annually with the exception of 2025, and then residential properties will be frozen at their current levels for the 2425 tax year with the exception of new construction and new improvements. And then also, they are placing the burden of proof on the chief appraiser in the TAD appraisal district that if a 5% threshold was established, that they would have to have clear and convincing evidence to support that higher increase. What we're here today is to just discuss the impact of this to Arlington ISD. So as an example, just to show you, this is the makeup of our properties in Arlington ISD. 41% of our values are in real estate, 15% is in personal property, a small amount in mineral lease properties, and 44% of it is in residential. Now, commercial mineral and personal property will still be appraised in 2526, so it's that piece, the teal and the pink that are affected because those are the residential properties. So we split them into two parts. The plan actually has it where if it's a residential property with no cap or no homestead exemption, those are the only values that will stay flat until 2027. So that's about 16% of our values in that pink section. Then, the other residential, so any other residential property with a cap or homestead exemption, then they will only, those will continue to increase up to 10% if the property has a homestead cap until that, the appraised value and the market value increases. But they're assessing that as of the market value as of right now and enrolling those values. So just to give you a timeline, how this all looks, because we're talking about this year, January 20, values are appraised annually January 1st of every year. In 2024, they appraised them this year, so this affects our 2024 tax rate and our 2425 budget cycle. That actually should say the resident, the 2024 residential values reflect the reappraisals. In 2025, that aligns with the TAD property value study, which is, that's when the state is looking at how TAD is doing their values. The 2025 values would be what would impact our 2025 tax rate and our 2526 AISD budget cycle. These values are going to be frozen at the 2024 levels, and then that 10% residential cap that I mentioned applies. In 2026, there will not be a reappraisal for the residential properties. That will impact our 2026 tax rate and the 2627 budget cycle. The residential values will still be frozen at the 2024 levels, but those 10% residential cap will apply for that teal piece. And then in 2027, there will be a property value study with the state that will impact our 2027 tax rate and the 2728 budget cycle, and that will be when they'll finally reflect, the values will reflect reappraisals at that point. So how this all affects us is, I just wanted to give a reminder of the foundation school program and how that state funding is a state and local shared relationship. So as your local share increases, which is what the district can generate locally through property taxes, that just determines how much the state is going to have to then make up. There are no adjustment in those formulas, we've talked about this, and it's determined, how much we're entitled is determined by our student population and other district characteristics. So for example, we've seen, we've all discussed this before, the bucket or the cup, you know, our student data elements, that students that we have, the attendance, participation determines the size of that bucket. Then, based on are the local dollars enough to fill that bucket, meaning your local tax, your tax values will determine that. If it don't, it does not, if it does not, then the state will fill that difference, which is that top, right, picture? But if what we're generating is enough, then those state dollars are needed. So how it would reflect in this scenario is, we are right now are in this where the state dollars top up. We have the size of the bucket, we generate up to that light blue, and then the, this is just as an example, and then the dark blue is where the state comes in. But what would happen if the state determines that the local dollar should have been higher? So then, that would mean, instead of us collecting at that line, we would be collecting lower because our values are lower, and, but the state's only going to fill up their portion, that dark blue, so it creates a gap with no funding source, and that, you could protect, and neither local or state would cover that. We call it a bubble that would occur, and that gap was just determined by how far state and local values are, which can be up to a few million. So on the left is, we reached out to TASBO, provide us as a model using AISD's near final, most recently closed summary of finance, 2223. And this is just an example of what would happen if, using this model, that if the state values assigned for tax year 2022 were 1% higher, 2% higher, or 10% higher than the local property values that are being certified locally, and you can see as those, as that gap is widening, so is the loss in funding that could potentially occur. So just once again, so to get the full funding due to the district, the funding formula relies on the assumption the local property values are accurate and aligned with the values, with market values. So any mismatch between a local appraisal role and the state's property value study may result in lower revenues. And then in addition to that, there is a timing aspect to this. We don't receive state values until, final state values until August. Our fiscal year ends in June, so if we were to get affected by it, then sometime, it might not allow the district sufficient time to recover or pivot if, you know, based on how big that gap becomes. Another piece is stagnant values could produce little or possibly no reduction in the tax rate because of compression. That's what determines our tax rate movement, and if our values aren't moving, our tax rate's not going to move. It would limit the property tax relief, and the district runs the appearance of higher tax rates compared to its peers in neighboring counties. And specifically related to our INS tax rate, stagnant property value growth could just mean a higher INS rate, and that would be needed to meet our annual debt service payments or limit the ability for us to pay down debt to achieve lower overall costs and create less future capacity. The past few years as a district, we've had, we've done some defecants and have saved our taxpayers millions of dollars from those defecants actions. So we are, there are possible board actions set before you today, and if you all have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Questions from trustees, questions and comments? I know these are two separate action items, but given the presentation covered both, we will have to vote separately on them, but I would invite trustees to discuss both at the same time. And if our online folks would sort of wave at me when it's, when you have something to say, then I will recognize you to speak, but I'm going to give, I'm going to have folks in the room give their comments first. Any trustees? Mr. Mike?
I do have a few comments. Thank you for your presentation today. It's very informative. With regards to this reappraisal plan, looking at it and researching it, there are several questions that came to mind that I don't have answers for, that I think answers were pertinent prior to implementing this plan. Newton's Third Law says for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction, and these are questions that I have that you don't have to answer, right? One of the things when it comes on impact on the funding formula and the local share, one of the questions that came to mind was how does TAD plan to ensure that the biennial appraisals align with market values to avoid discrepancies that could lead to reduction in state funding for school districts? There's no answer to that out there. The second question is, what contingency plans are in place if the local property values fall behind market values, potentially resulting in a bubble, as you said, between the local share and state share of funding? There's no answer to that. When it comes to the effect on the infrastructure and bond obligations, how will the stagnant property values resulting from biennial appraisals affect the ability of school districts such as Arlington ISD to meet their bond obligations and complete infrastructure projects promised to voters? I don't have an answer for that. With the potential increase in interest in sinking tax rates, what are the projected impacts on the district's debt servicing ability, and how might this influence future capital needs? I don't have an answer for that. For the timeliness and adequacy of the funding adjustments, how does TAD plan to address the timing issues inherent in the reappraisal process which may not allow school districts sufficient time to recover or pivot if revenues fall short in any given year? I don't have an answer for that. In what ways does the TAD plan to mitigate the risk of having a mismatch between local appraisal roles and property value study values which could lead to lower state revenues? There's no answer for that. When it comes to transparency and justification of the new appraisal plan, what evidence or studies were conducted to justify the implementation of the biennial appraisal plan, especially considering the potential negative impact on school district funding? I don't have an answer for that. How will TAD ensure transparency and fairness in the appraisal process, particularly in deciding which properties might receive higher appraisals under the new 5% threshold limit? I don't have an answer for that either. For me as a trustee, the overall purpose is to ensure that the future of our community is thriving and survives, and our future are the children. Without our children, we have no community. Without our future, we have no community. It is up to me as a trustee to ensure that I do everything possible to ensure that our future is able to be as successful as possible. That includes ensuring that our teachers are paid, that they have the best curriculum possible, that our students have the best facilities to thrive and succeed, that our students are safe and supported and provided for, and that the lowest of our community who are unable to afford the luxuries in life, that they have an avenue that is education to ensure that they succeed. And so I have issues with this plan, and yes, as a taxpayer, I own property, I own a business, and I know that we're paying things, and I know that at times things go too high. But at the end of the day, I have been successful because of education, and my number one goal is to ensure that our future is successful as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Do we have any other trustees with comments or questions? I will, seeing none, turn it to the folks who are joining us virtually. Do we have questions from our virtual attendees? I don't see any. Okay. I have just a couple of questions, Ms. Martin, just in a couple of comments, just to build on what Mr. Mike said. I have similar questions. You know, I think it's, I think it's a point Mr. Bennett made earlier about working together, and that point is well taken, and I, my understanding is that that didn't happen here. I mean, the notice of this, what is a very significant change to the way that TAD does appraisals, was announced a relatively short time ago and implemented very quickly. Are you aware of any sort of studies or white papers or analyses of how this appraisal plan interacts with our school finance system?
So that's why, we had reached out to TASBO, Texas Association of School Business Officials, and that's who supported us by providing us a model of how this could affect us. We also looking at the Texas Comptroller's Property Value Study and how that system works, and also reached out to other school finance consultants. What we presented here is, in essence, a summary of that school funding mechanism and the potential impact that it could have to the school, to our district.
So can you go back to the slide with the bucket that has the table up next to it?
Yes.
So, this is, I understand this is analyses and modeling that you affirmatively went out and had done and had people help us with, but we haven't received anything like this from TAD, correct?
No, that's correct.
Do we even know if that exists?
No, not regarding the state funding formula regarding school district, no.
And see, this, and that's a big concern for me because school finance is incredibly complicated. I mean, the state legislature, they meet every other year, but they have folks working on school finance issues pretty much year-round, and I, you know, tax and school finance is pretty esoteric, it's not something that I know people generally pay attention to, but you know, I think there's a common misconception that when you get your property tax bill and you see a line item for Arlington ISD, that that money goes directly to Arlington ISD, and that doesn't happen. It does for the other taxing entities, but it doesn't for us. Our money goes to Austin, they run it through the complicated school finance formulas, and some money gets, comes back and some doesn't. And so, my concern with this is that, given how complex school finance is generally, rushing through a plan at the local level without consulting us, without any sort of consideration of how this pretty significant change in how TAD does business could affect schools, I think is pretty, it's a pretty imprudent thing to do. It's not, I understand that taxpayers need relief. I think everybody does, but there's always that balance between, we want taxpayers to get some relief, but also we need our schools to be funded adequately to do the job that we expect them to do. And in an environment where we are already seeing a significant underfunding of education, I mean, I think our, with inflation, our sort of buying value has decreased, I think, by almost 20% in just the last five years since the last time the basic allotment was changed. We haven't even been able to get an adjustment for the state for that. They didn't adjust anything on that front, on the basic allotment in the last legislative session, even though they were sitting on a record to rainy day fund. And now we have something else coming down the pipe that, if this chart is correct, even if there's a 1% discrepancy in the aspect of the state finance, school finance system that you identified, it looks like a $5.5 million hit to us, and just to put that into perspective, that's almost 80 teachers. It's over a 1% annual raise, and that's only if they're 1% off. But this is just a model based on 2223 numbers, and so I would have expected at a minimum before TAD adopted an appraisal plan that could potentially result in this sort of issue for us, before they adopted a plan that, a question Mr. Mike asked, and that's on your slide, could actually result in some districts having to increase their INS rate, which would mitigate any relief to taxpayers, that would prevent school districts from doing things like we did at our meeting last week, where we were able to do some cool things on the finance side to save us money with our bonds. That would also be a negative impact to the taxpayer. So I don't see this appraisal plan, having had adequate consideration at all, I don't think it's, I know some people are selling it as sort of an unmitigated good for the taxpayer, I don't think, I haven't seen much that convinces me that that's true either, and I think some of the early, what little data we have been able to throw together on this truncated timeline suggests that it's not. So I can't in good conscience support this. Now, if I can make another point, I would have, up until July 1st of this year, taxing entities like the cities and municipalities and school districts in Tarrant County and across the state, we could have voted to disapprove of just the appraisal plan for TAD because, and I think we have really good reason to do that. But as of July 1st, due to a change in, a very minor change in state law, we no longer have that ability just for appraisal plans. So, again, I don't want to put my conspiracy hat on, but I will, but it seems really interesting to me that at the same time, a new law went into effect that only affects large counties, by the way, counties over 75,000 people, only taxing entities in large counties can't approve their appraisal district's appraisal plans going forward, and not a few weeks later, TAD does this. So I would very much just like to vote against the appraisal plan. Really, the only authority it seems like we have legally left is to disapprove TAD's budget. And again, Mr. Bennett's points on, there's some things in that budget increase that I think would be good things for TAD to do, but left without recourse to something that's really going to, I think, hurt us, we're back at the budget. And outside looking in, and I don't understand all the intricacies of what TAD does, I do think if they're going to, it seems like, do less appraisal work as a result of this plan, I think an almost 15% increase in their budget, I need justification for that, too. And so, I think in a perfect world, I might reserve some more consideration on the budget issues, but given that the only tool I have left to really formally express my displeasure with how little consideration we were given during the appraisal plan approval process is to also vote against TAD's budget. And so I will be voting for both of these resolutions. Any other trustees with comments or questions? Dr. Smith?
Mr. Chapa, or President Chapa, members of the board, thank you for being here today. Thank you for hearing our presentation and our concern and for considering these resolutions. I will not reiterate the things that have been said and stated very clearly by Mr. Mike and Mr. Chapa. I will say this, a less than 60-day timeline for us to realize all of this is concerning to me if partnership is really the goal of this community in this county. And so, that is one piece of the puzzle that I think is important to reiterate, and the second being, looking at both of these two things together, both resolutions, when you consider the fact that they are talking about a reappraisal plan that will potentially negatively have millions of dollars of impact on a school district, and at the same time, increasing budget and increasing the amount we are paying to TAD, I think it is important for the board to consider both of those things together at the same time and what ask this really is. We appreciate your consideration today, and feel free to, if you have any more questions or comments, please let us know.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I see no more requesters in the room. One more chance for our virtual attendees, comments or questions? Seeing none online, but we do, Ms. Richardson has the floor.
So there's a couple of things that I want to talk about. One thing, you talked a lot about property. One of the things that I really want to think about with this lack of funding that One of the things that I really want to think about with this lack of funding that would be coming towards us and what we could, what would help, what would hurt us as a student loss is, some of the numbers that we have right now from the state of Texas that's on record is right now, our student allotment is at $6,160 per student. We are already behind $4,000 in the national average. And we see that number dropping and the lack of funding, when we say we should go to the state to get our funding, they're not giving us our funding. We've discussed it over and over. And so to know that the lack of these funds, how it could really hurt our students and our staff, Dr. Smith, to hear you say 80 teachers could be affected, when we are already trying to do everything we can for our teachers, the staff, the culture, that sends the wrong message. Mr. Bennett, when you talked about we need to work together with the TAD board, let me be blunt with you. I saw a news article as I was traveling this summer, and I read, oh, TAD board is doing, and I pulled it up on my phone, I'm on vacation with my family, I am having a fabulous time, by the way. You should all go to Alaska, the weather is cooler, it is better. But as I read this article, I looked at the picture and zoomed in. That looks so familiar. They had their meeting here where that happened. I did not even, I was, that is how unconnected I was with what was going on. I don't think that's a lack of ignorance on my part. I think it's a lack of communication from them. And to know that we put votes in and we appointed people, and I still had that lack of knowledge, that right there, when you say you want us to work together, let's work together. Let's be in communication. Let's find out what's going on.
Can I say that up just briefly?
Hi, it's not our practice, Mr. Bennett, but I appreciate you.
But I'll talk to you afterwards. Because I was frustrated.
But there's a solution.
I want to hear afterwards. Absolutely, I do. I'll have a discussion, absolutely, because this is a discussion, and we want to have discussion with community members. I'm shocked you're the only one here today. It's crazy to me. When we, no, I think lots of people care, but I don't think they understand the complexities of what we're dealing with. And one of the things you talked about, President Chapa, was the rainy day fund. It, on record, what we have from the state comptroller's office is that by the end of 2025, it is going to rise by $27.1 billion. So to know that the state is sitting on that kind of money, and we're not being funded properly, it's not going to be released to us, to know that TAD is hurting us in the long run by decisions that they're making in 60 days or less, I just don't think we have enough data to move forward on any of this. Trustee Mike, you pointed out all the questions that you don't have answers for. Because of this, because of what we know and how we're funded, because of the unanswered questions, and because the fact we don't have a conversation going with TAD currently, I don't feel good about any of what has been presented by them.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Last call for comments or questions. Seeing none, we'll move to vote. As the voting prompt comes up here in the room, I will call for the votes of those attending virtually one by one. Let's, what, we do need a motion on the floor. Before we do that, do we have a motion? I see Mr. Mike.
I move to adopt the resolution disapproving the Tarrant Appraisal District 2025 through 2026 reappraisal plan.
I have a motion for Mr. Mike. I have a second. I have a second from Ms. Haynes. We'll now proceed to vote. Ms. Fowler, can I please have your vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks, can I have your vote?
I vote yes.
Ms. McMurro, can I have your vote?
I vote yes.
All three virtual attendees vote in the affirmative. The resolution unanimously carries. We'll move on to item B, consider resolution opposing the Tarrant Appraisal District 2025 budget. Do I have a motion? I see Ms. Haynes.
I move to adopt the resolution disapproving the Tarrant Appraisal District 2025-26 budget.
I have a motion from Ms. Haynes. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Mike. We'll now proceed to vote. Those in the room, please cast your vote. We'll start this time with Ms. McMurro.
I vote yes.
Mr. Wilbanks?
I vote yes.
Ms. Fowler?
I vote yes.
All three attendees voting in the affirmative, and all trustees present in the room voting in the affirmative, the motion unanimously carries. We'll now move on to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Crossno, do we have any speakers registered for non-agenda forum?
President Chapa, we do not.
No speakers for non-agenda items. Seeing no further reports on the agenda, and we are not going to proceed to the closed meeting, I will call this meeting adjourned at 10:15 a.m.